Welcome to the regular monthly meeting of the Board of Commissioners, held for the purpose of transacting the general business of the township. Today's date is April 11, 2018. The meeting is being held in the Springfield Township Building. Please stand and join the Board of Commissioners in a moment of silent reflection honoring the servicemen and women who've placed themselves in harm's way in order to help preserve our safety. Please remain standing and join me in the Board, I'm sorry, in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I note that we are at full complement up here tonight, and at this point, I would entertain a motion dispensing with the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting as written and recorded in the official minute book of the township.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote. The Board of Commissioners conducted an executive session on Saturday, March 31, 2018, and again after the April 9, 2018 workshop meeting of the Board of Commissioners. Both meetings involve discussions of potential litigation with the township solicitor. At this point, I'd like to call on our Police Chief, Michael Pitco, and Magisterial District Justice, Kate McGill, who will administer the oath of office to Corporal Christian Wilber.
All right, thank you Commissioner. Well, thank you. I'm pleased to introduce to Police Department's newest Corporal, Christian Wilber. Chris is a graduate of Abington High School, 2008. Graduated with an associate's degree from the Montgomery County Community College, criminal justice, 2010. Also graduated the Montgomery County Community College Municipal Police Academy, 2011. Went to the Springfield Township Police Department, September of 2013. Previously, a part-time officer with the Jacobtown Borough Police Department between 2011 and 2013. And his training background, standardized field sobriety test practitioner, 2017, DUI sobriety checkpoint, 2015, international police mountain bike association cyclist, 2015, and also field training officer in 2015. The recognition, recognition rather, for a job well done, August and September of 2017, for the arrest of the same person for breaking the vehicles in the Flower Town and Wimbor section of Springfield Township. So we wish to congratulate Corporal Wilber, who not only scored first in examination process, but also his exemplary work, his positive demeanor, and I don't think I've seen a day go by where Chris was not smiling at the Police Department. We look forward to him taking on more responsibility. Also like to recognize his father in the audience, as well as his girlfriend, Anna, and have finally recognized all the Springfield Police Officers in attendance, as well as officers from the Jacobtown Borough Police Department.
Aye, Christian Wilber.
Do swear.
Do swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Obey and defend.
Obey and defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
The Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And the township of Springfield.
And the township of Springfield.
That I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As a corporal.
As a corporal.
For Springfield Township.
For Springfield Township.
And that I will uphold.
And that I will uphold.
Obey and enforce.
Obey and enforce.
The law.
The law.
Without consideration.
Without consideration.
To a person's race.
To a person's race.
Color.
Color.
Sex.
Sex.
Religious creed.
Religious creed.
Sexual orientation.
Sexual orientation.
Age.
Age.
National origin.
National origin.
Ancestry.
Ancestry.
Handicap.
Handicap.
Or disability.
Or disability.
I will obey the rules and regulations.
I will obey the rules and regulations.
Policies and procedures.
Policies and procedures.
Governing sworn members.
Governing sworn members.
Of the Springfield Township Police Department.
Of the Springfield Township Police Department.
Also, I will not knowingly accept.
Also, I will not knowingly accept.
Directly or indirectly.
Directly or indirectly.
Any money or other valuable things.
Any money or other valuable things.
For performance or non-performance.
For performance or non-performance.
Of any act or duty.
Of any act or duty.
Pertaining to my office.
Pertaining to my office.
Other than such compensation.
Other than such compensation.
As may be allowed.
As may be allowed.
By the Board of Commissioners.
By the Board of Commissioners.
Of Springfield Township.
Of Springfield Township.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
If you want to get a picture with your folks and the Chief and Kate, that'd be great. Hold the guy in the second row, second to the left.
Good luck.
Congratulations Corporal.
Okay, thank you. That's always very enjoyable to do that.
Still doing more.
Oh, great, great, great. We will savor this as long as possible. That's right. Can't get enough of this.
Hey, Mike. Mike.
Thank you again.
Put it where you want it.
I'm about Roy Munson.
Thanks.
Should we shut the door?
You want me to get that?
Yeah.
He's got it.
Mike Scott?
Okay. Is the other Mike sitting here looking at his phone?
The Board is now open to comments or questions from the public. The Board draws particular attention to those items listed on the agenda this evening. Please be advised that once the committee reports begin, the Board can no longer accept questions from the floor. At the conclusion of the committee reports, public comments will once again be accepted. However, official action on those issues listed on the agenda will have already taken place. Therefore, if you wish to comment on an agenda item, now would be the appropriate time. Do we have any public comment? Great. And please state your name and address, please.
My name is Keith McLennan. I'm a country lawyer from Collegeville, Pennsylvania. I'm here on behalf of the Springfield Ambulance Association, which has been a topic before this Board, I understand, previously. I regret that I haven't been involved until recently. However, I have attempted to get my arms around the facts and the circumstances surrounding this unfortunate situation, and I wanted to, in essence, provide the Board with some insight and perspective from the ambulance's side, because I believe that there's been, unfortunately, some miscommunication, misunderstandings, and some perhaps factual irregularities that I think is important that we all tend to resolve. So with that, I mean, I wanted to talk a little bit about the ambulance generally. I don't want to usurp all of the public comment time, but I think it's important, particularly since I think that the Board has a monumental decision in front of it, that in order to make it, I think it needs as much information as possible, as opposed to making decisions based upon thin information or a lack of information. But what my understanding of the facts, and of course, as I said, I'm new to the party here, so I don't know all of them. You folks probably know some that I don't know, and I may know some that you don't know, so bear with me. And I'm not here to be accusatory, nor am I here to be, to harangue anyone. I'm here to try and solve the problem. One of the things that I think most people misperceive about lawyers generally is that they create the problem. No, we're problem solvers, so that's what I'm here for. Both sides have perspective, both sides have a certain amount of information they bring to the table. But what I will say is that the ambulance stands ready, willing, and unfortunately not completely able to continue on. That was what started this conversation, I believe, in the fall of last year. The ambulance, as you may know, has been in the township since 1956. It's provided a service that the Board hasn't had to worry about for the most part of those over 70 years. However, when it came to you asking for some help in the fall, I believe that everybody came to the table with goodwill and in good faith to try and resolve the funding crisis that the ambulance was faced with. Many of you probably saw my letter that was sent on Good Friday to the Board, and I outlined and detailed some of the problems in ambulances generally. Some ambulances do well, some ambulances not so well. I represent at least seven different ambulance squads in southeastern Pennsylvania, and I can tell you that the problem that Springfield Ambulance is having is not unique. It's not unique because, if you look at the accountant's report that your accountant was able to generate from the information that has been provided, although I understand there's been some back and forth about whether all of the information was provided or enough information was provided, I can tell you that the issue, if you look at that, is revenue. It's not expenses. Their expenses are in line with every ambulance that I've represented. The issue is revenue, and why is that? Because they're not aggressive in collecting their bills. Why are they not aggressive in collecting their bills? The reason I got involved with them initially was to do the collection for them. The reason they're not aggressive is because they've deferred to the residents of the township. So as a consequence, what happens? Everybody who gets called for an ambulance tends to think that it's paid for already, number one, and number two, when it's not, and they get a bill, they're upset by it. So what does the Springfield Ambulance do, or what have they done? They haven't been terribly aggressive about it. They have a billing company that bills, a billing company that rebills, a billing company that sends a dunning notice, but that's it. And in this day and age, folks, it ain't going to do it. What it requires is, unfortunately, a hired gun like me to go out and start going after people to make sure that they pay. The ambulance has been a certain, a certain amount of gentility associated with that. They don't want to rock the boat with the residents of the township. That being said, they recognize that in order to survive, they have to collect more. In order to collect more, they have to go after it, and that's why they retained me to help them with that. Not for this. I wasn't retained for this. I frankly didn't even know this was going on until about two or three weeks ago. So once I was retained to do the collection work, they then came to me and said, can you help us with this? So that's why I'm here to try and help with that. And you may think that this has been discussed in the past. I'm not so sure that it's been discussed fully enough. For example, you folks were gracious enough to make an offer. That offer was half the Board and the termination of the existing chief. I recognize that you have a certain perspective when it comes to that. The Board has been resistant to that concept. Why? Because that's not the panacea. That's not what solves this problem. Frankly, the chief, in many respects, who, if you saw my letter, is highly educated, highly skilled, highly respected. The chief is part of the solution, not part of the problem per se. If you, in essence, cut that person out now, who are you going to put in that spot? Who's going to cover that work that that person's been doing? How is that going to be handled? My view, and when I met with Mr. Garrity a couple of weeks ago when this all came about, he was gracious enough to invite me to his office to talk about it, and I came over and we had a nice frank discussion about these things. The question is, what is the township offering with respect to financial support? Because we haven't heard that yet. We want to do what is right for the township, for the Board, and for the residents. How do we want to do that? We want to do it by way of, okay, let's look at this, let's set benchmarks. You want 50% of the Board, you can have 50% of the Board. You want the chief, you can have the chief, but you have to give the time that is required. So what does that mean? It means, let's, let's measure this. Let's say, okay, we'll get together, put your Board members on the Board, let's evaluate where we are, let's do some triage, let's see where things are, and let's move forward. If you're not satisfied, we don't meet certain benchmarks, great, you can do what you want to do. You can take over control of the Board if you want, you can then take all the assets if you want, but at this point, if we can't reach agreement, what do you think is going to happen? There's going to be a contest between both sides. We don't want that contest. Frankly, there's a building over there that's, that's worth some money. There are ambulances over there that are worth some money. There's receivables that are on the street that's worth some money. Do we really want to fight over those things? However, if the, if the Board gets its people in to the ambulance to see what's happening, to understand better what the process is, our view is that you can, in essence, assist as opposed to defeat or kill the ambulance. And I ask that you folks consider that. We can set up whatever benchmarks you think are appropriate, but to me, it's a three to six month triage period. However, I will say that as a consequence of this inability to collect a certain amount of their money, they are running out of money. And I know that the township has in the past assisted with the payroll aspect of it, where they haven't been repaid necessarily for the payroll. We have controversy about that. We don't have to have a controversy about that, is what my point is. So from the perspective that if the Board thinks that they can work with the ambulance, we think there's a, there's a kernel of hope there. We'd like to throw that Hail Mary past. That's what I've been talking to the Board about, because they're very depressed about this. Every one of those people there is either a resident of the township and has been with the ambulance for over 20 years, or recently moved out of the township for personal reasons. Those people are dedicated to the service of this township. They want to see this ambulance survive. It's not about them. They get paid nothing for this, and it's not about the chief. But I think if you look at the chief, and the chief who's been there for many, many years, she's been the one who's kept this together despite the ups and downs of the revenue, despite the ups and downs of the expense. And I lend to you the fact that it's not always about the figurehead. The folks that are here from the ambulance, they want to preserve their jobs. We want to preserve their jobs. If the ambulance service is terminated or de-designated as the EMS provider in this community, then who's going to do it? It's going to be somebody else. It's not going to be those folks, unfortunately. They can go and, and serve on other ambulances. We don't want that to happen. We want them to be here. We want them to work out of that building. We want this to keep going, but it can't keep going if we're at loggerheads. What we're asking for you to do is to, in essence, give it a chance. I think that if you look at the First Class Township Code, it talks about support of the ambulance. Springfield Township, particularly its Board, has been very fortunate. How they've been fortunate? For many, many years, there's been no stipend paid. I can tell you, with the different ambulances that I represent, just about every township provides anywhere from $50,000 to $100,000. I recognize that there's some controversies around that, because if the fire company gets some money, or other emergency management company or services in the township get money, they're volunteers. This used to be a volunteer organization. Volunteerism is down. Why? In this sphere or space, because of licensure and all the training they have to get, what it costs. So as a consequence, all these folks that are sitting here used to run the ambulance. They don't anymore, possibly because of the gray air, but also possibly because of the expense and cost and the time that's, that is required. These professional people who get the training, who get the licensure, who get the certification, that's why it's gone to a paid professional staff, and that's one of the reasons why it's very difficult for an ambulance to succeed, because the reimbursements are not enough to cover the overhead. Now, that can change if you're more aggressive with your collections, if you're, if you're more interested in who in the population is being paid. For example, Medicare, what's the reimbursement? Typically, around $360 for a person that you have to pick up. It costs that, if not more, to take that ambulance out of the garage. So how is that funding model going to work? The only way it's going to work is when the township steps up and provides some, some financial assistance, when the Board makes some sacrifices, when the staff makes the sacrifices that they make. That's what makes this all work, and a population that has private insurance. Unfortunately, private insurance is also getting complicated, because they're pegging their reimbursements toward things like Medicare rates, and they're saying, okay, we'll reimburse you Medicare plus a factor. These are all things that come into play. So what we're asking for you to do is to give the ambulance a chance, a second chance, even though this is the first time they've ever asked for a second chance. It hasn't been in the past, and Mr. Berger, correct me if I'm wrong, there's been a great relationship between the township and the ambulance for many, many years, and there hasn't really been anything like this before. All we're asking is that you put a number on it. Say, we will support you ambulance, we'll contribute a stipend of a certain amount of money. We asked for a certain amount of money. We haven't received a response as to what that would be in terms of help. If you bring somebody else in, you're going to have to give them some money, because that's the way it works. Why give it to them? Give it to the township ambulance. That's what you need, that's what you'd like, that's the preference. So from our perspective, the support is critical, the fact it's a township-based organization is critical, the history is critical. So in good faith, we're willing to sit down with a select group of this Board, with your solicitor, to hammer out that agreement that's going to work for everybody. If you've already made up your minds, you've already made up your minds. If you haven't, consider it, but we would strongly encourage you to keep the ambulance, save the ambulance, so if, it's really up to you folks to make that decision, because there's not much more than we can do, other than to give you what you want, but over a period of time. So with that, I'd ask that you consider it. I recognize that in your process, you really don't do that until after the public comment, and that you will then, will wait until you ultimately deliberate. I don't know, Jim, how you're going to ultimately do it, but that's our plea. We're willing to work with you. We hope that you're willing to work with us. So thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other public comment at this point?
Going once, going twice. Okay, we will now move into the committee reports on the agenda. We've done item one on the agenda, which is the oath of office. Item two is ambulance services, and I have a rather lengthy statement followed by some motions to read, which will articulate our, our statement of the history. For the past 10 or 11 years, the Board of Commissioners has been working with the Springfield Ambulance Association to understand the financial challenges facing the association. On several occasions, the Board offered financial assistance, but required presentation of financial records of the association to understand the actual need. The same process is willingly implemented with the three fire companies of the township. Each time, the Springfield Ambulance Association objected to providing the requested financial records. The Ambulance Association did accept an offer by the Commissioners to provide indirect financial assistance by permitting the association to purchase healthcare insurance and fuel from the township, and for the township to provide payroll services for the association at significant cost savings. The Ambulance Association was to reimburse the township for all costs incurred. Approximately four years ago, the association began to be delinquent in reimbursing the township. Rather than end the relationship and foreclose on the debt for fear the association would collapse, the Board of Commissioners carried the debt and formally encouraged and continuously requested reimbursement. The debt owed by the Springfield Ambulance Association to the township has now grown to over $300,000. During 2017 and 2018, the Township and Ambulance Association discussed the situation regularly at Commissioners' meetings. The Commissioners met with Ambulance Association Board of Directors, and individual Commissioners have met with individual Ambulance Association Directors. Again, offers of financial assistance from the township were made, conditioned upon the need to review the financial records of the association to understand the financial need. Adequate financial records were not provided. Over the past several months, the Board of Commissioners has been approached by employees of the Springfield Ambulance Association, who uniformly indicated that the challenges facing the association are not only in the business management, but management of the operations. In an effort to save the Springfield Ambulance Association and to assure proper ambulance services are provided by the community, the Commissioners offered assistance to the association if the Commissioners could replace 50% of the Board of Directors with appointments of business persons from the community, and the chief of operations would need to resign. The Ambulance Association, as you just heard, rejected that offer on several occasions. The Ambulance Association hired legal counsel, who in a letter dated March 30, 2018, reconfirmed the rejection of the condition by which the township would assist with the retention of Springfield Ambulance, and stated that unless the two parties could come to an agreement, the Springfield Ambulance Association would cease operations on April 30, 2018. The Pennsylvania First Class Township Code requires municipalities to assure proper ambulance services are available to the community. This may be done through direct expenditures to provide the ambulance service, or by entering into contracts for the ambulance services. In the event the township could not make arrangements with the Springfield Ambulance Association, concurrent with the ongoing efforts with the Ambulance Association, the Commissioners issued a request for proposals for ambulance services. Five responses were received from surrounding ambulance organizations. Springfield Ambulance Association did not submit a proposal. Given the statutory responsibility to assure proper ambulance services to the Springfield community, rejection by the Springfield Ambulance Association to provide all of the financial records requested by the township to understand the financial need of the association, rejection of the condition for a new board and operations management in exchange for township assistance, and notice from legal counsel of the Ambulance Association that the Springfield Ambulance Association will cease operations on April 30, 2018, the Board of Commissioners is left with no alternative than to consider the engagement of another ambulance service provider. So therefore, I have two motions. The first one that I make here, and then we'll have further comments, is I move that effective April 27, 2018, any and all 911 designations, contracts, agreements, or understandings that Springfield Ambulance Association is to provide ambulance service for Springfield Township Montgomery County shall be terminated for cause. This action is taken pursuant to authority granted by a 53 PS subsection 56534, ambulance and rescue life-saving services in the Pennsylvania First Class Township Code. That is my motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
And I will open it up to the Board for questions and comments at this point. I'll go first, unless somebody wants to. This certainly isn't the path that we wanted to go on. They've been loyal members of the community since, for over 60 years, and we really wanted to figure out a way to work this out, but we have to balance that against throwing good money after bad and doing what's responsible for management for the township. We feel that it wouldn't be a prudent use of tax dollars to try and right this foundering ship, and I have four points that just sort of hit me as I think through this. One of them was, as you read, the best financials we've seen, or you have to file with the IRS Form 990s, and as you read the 990s from a couple of years ago, because there's a bit of a lag there, we saw a drop of revenue of $100,000, which is roughly a 20% drop in revenue.
And yet, we were never able to get a good explanation as to where that was coming from, and that's just kind of scary, that those answers aren't easily there, because that's like kind of the most important thing, and that just, it affects my confidence. And given that, and other things where we just haven't been able to get the numbers that really work to model, it's hard for us to accurately assess what level of financial support is necessary. It's just, it's a black hole in there. It may be that you come in and you'll run it real well, and it's at break even, or it may be you run it really well, and it's a couple hundred thousand. We don't know, and that's just, that uncertainty is frightening us. A third one is that we've learned in the process that they have debt on both the building and on one of the vehicles, and the debt's about $70,000. And if we come in and take over that, that debt is another hole we need to dig out. So that's 70, not the 300,000, we're a party to that debt, so we're sort of stuck there in a matter of And if we come in and take over that, that debt is another hole we need to dig out. So that's 70, not the 300,000, we're a party to that debt. So we're sort of stuck there in a matter of what. But the 70,000 is just another thing that dips the scale, because that's on their balance sheet. A final comment, I said four on these, and then I want to make a different comment, is that we need to not only do what's kind of worked now, we need to say, where do we want to be in five years? Where do we want to be in 10 years? And I think the model, we've seen this change, you know. Couple decades ago, nobody was paid, everybody was volunteers, and that's all changed. The business model have changed. The community ambulance at the size of a Springfield or smaller is, I think, a dying breed. There may be some that hold on. I like to think that together, we could have figured out a way to make it hold on, but I'm not sure that would be the right outcome for five or 10 years down the road. What we'll be offering to is to merge with an adjoining nonprofit community ambulance, not to merge, but to hire them to do it. I think that's what you'll see, is some of them will grow and others will combine. I think that's, we're just getting ahead of that. It's not our goal to do that, but we need to not only do what's now, but we need to think forward. And then one other point of background, because it may be confusing, particularly for people that may be watching this on TV, is just the history of what we are. The ambulance association and the fire companies are all nonprofits. They are totally independent of the township. The way the fire companies work is, they are all volunteer, nobody gets paid, they don't have paid first responders, and we give them a stipend every year. So they get money from us. That's why we've seen audited financials from them for years, and that number's in the 150,000 range for each of those at this point. Nor do they bill you for service if they come to your house. It's a different business model, but they are, the key thing is that they're an independent nonprofit, as is the Springfield ambulance. They're not, we have no connection to them, other than we're next door to them, we own the land under their building, there are various connections. Our job as a township, and it was in that thing I read, but it's, some of that was kind of legalese, is we get to designate who is the ambulance provider. That's what we get to do, and that's what we're doing here tonight. So that is our role. We're also a creditor to them, but we are not Springfield ambulance, they're a separate entity. I just think that might make it a little clearer where we are. So that's where I am, and that's what, so this first motion would be to terminate the agreement as of the 27th of April, and then the next one would be to bring somebody else on. Does any of the other commissioners wish to say anything? Go on, Muntz.
Yeah, I'd like to say something concerning it. I am fully in favor of the direction that this board is going on, and the direction that is dealing with the Springfield Ambulance Association. I fully support it. However, my parents always taught me that when you give your word to someone, you keep that word regardless of what happened. And I sat and I talked to family members of the ETMs and their family members, and I looked them in the eye, and they looked me in my face, and I gave them my word that I would not support any vote that did not assure that the ETMs would become a part of any new ambulance company that came aboard. And because of that promise and that commitment and giving my word to those ETMs and their families is the only reasons why I am not in support of this board's decision. I truly agree, I agree with them all the way across. But I honestly, I sat with you, and I stated that if the new ambulance company, or the new ambulance association that we were considering, could not guarantee that they would absorb those families, I would not support it. And for that reasoning only, is the only reasoning why I'm not supporting the vote.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Graham. Do we have any other comments from the bench here? Okay, there being none, so this is the first motion, which is to terminate as of April 27. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Please record a six to one vote. So the next motion is, I move that pursuant to 53 PS subsection 56534, ambulance and rescue life-saving services, the Board of Commissioners engage the services of the Community Ambulance Association of Ambler, CAAAs, as the designated ambulance service provider for Springfield Township effective April 28, 2018, subject to the negotiation of agreements, therefore, to the satisfaction of both boards and both solicitors. It should be noted that CAAA has already agreed to provide employment interviews for all the non-administrative staff of the Springfield Ambulance Association, and to give qualified SAA staff members first priority for any employment opportunities at CAAA created by agreements with Springfield Township. This agreement should minimize job loss, and I will say, well, let me finish the motion then. That is my motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions or comments? Let me just finish on that, what I started to say. Part of that agreement, we're not going to lay out all the pieces to that agreement. Part of that agreement is that the service level will stay the way it is, that there will still be 24-hour coverage out of here, whether it's Public Works or the ambulance shelter, it depends what we have access to. But that will, which also necessitates the same level of staffing, and Ambler does not have excess staffing that comes in. So those jobs are there, they have to, they can't just commit to blanket everybody because they have their own requirements and they need to go through that process. But they've, that is their plan, so we're hopeful that most, many, most, or all of those employees will be able to continue, because that was certainly important to us. Are there any other questions or comments from the board? There being none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote. And then township managers directed to alert Montgomery County Dispatch Center to the transition in order that they are prepared. That concludes that matter. We move on to item three, the April bill listing. I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the March check reconciliation in the amount of $808,512.25 in the April bill listing in the amount of $869,183.19. That is my motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote. The next item is zoning hearing board agenda. The next meeting of the zoning hearing board is scheduled for Monday, April 23, at 7:00 in the Springfield Township Building. And that will be George Hudson and Collision Star, 1150 East Mermaid Lane, is appealing the determination of the zoning officer regarding the use of the property as a motor vehicle repair shop. The property was previously subject to a petition for variance to allow a motor vehicle repair shop use that was denied. That ruling is currently under appeal. The subject property is located in the limited industrial district. That's an announcement. And then item five, also concerning the zoning hearing board, I move that the Board of Commissioners authorize the Office of the Township Solicitor to defend the order of the zoning officer at all meetings of the zoning hearing board in regard to the appeal by George Hudson and Collision Star involving the property 1150 East Mermaid Lane, Windmore. The property was previously subject to a petition for variance to allow a motor vehicle repair shop use, and denied by the zoning hearing board. The applicant commenced utilizing the property as a motor vehicle repair shop, and the zoning officer issued a cease and desist order, which is the subject of the appeal. Yeah, I'll read that afterwards, then. Okay, we have a motion, do we have, that's my motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Then I'll read this comment here. I'll read that afterwards and then explain it. We have a motion on the floor, are there any questions or comments? Let me explain then what's going on here. This was a use issue, they applied for a variance, they didn't get the variance, so that has been, has gone on appeal, that's the appeal. In the meantime, they then went and did it anyway, and said, well, I think what they're saying, I'm not going to make their case well for them, but their case was that we didn't really need the variance, we're doing it anyway. So then we cited them for that. So what's happening at the zoning board, which is what we're voting on here, is they're appealing the cease and desist order. They appeal the zoning board's denial of the variance up at the, that's done in the Court of Common Pleas. So they have two different things going on, but that's what's going to be happening here. The zoning board itself had already heard the underlying case. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote. And then this last one just ties that all together. At the February 14 meeting of the Board of Commissioners, the board authorized the Office of the Township Solicitor to defend the appeal. So this is defending the other piece of that litigation. We've already done that. And that concludes my report, and I would move on to the Chairman of the Public Works and Facilities Committee, Commissioner Shum.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one item this evening. I move that the Board of Commissioners authorize the township to solicit proposals for traffic engineering services related to possible traffic improvements to East Mill Road in the vicinity of Highland Avenue and Penoke Road. That's my motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Record a unanimous vote.
Concludes my report, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Shum. We move to the Chairman of the Community Development Committee, Commissioner Standish.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two items this evening. The first concerns Resolution Number 1447. Springfield Township owns a recreational hall located at 1200 East Willow Grove Avenue. The building was constructed in 1958 and is presently improved with a multipurpose gymnasium, auditorium, catering kitchen, and restrooms with physical barriers that prevent accessibility to all members of the community. Therefore, I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt Resolution Number 1447, a resolution endorsing and authorizing an application to the Community Development Block Grant Program for the project known as the Springfield Township Recreational Hall ADA Improvement Project. That is my motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments on the motion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
And next, concerning public hearings coming up here, the Board of Commissioners is currently considering two draft ordinances to amend the Springfield Township Code. One, to amend the sign ordinance to clarify the number of sign faces and sign arrangement display of sign faces. And two, to amend the subdivision of land ordinance related to traffic management studies, which includes a complete rewrite of the requirements and process of conducting traffic impact studies for developments. Public hearings are required to receive public comment on these two ordinances. Therefore, I move that the Board of Commissioners authorize the advertisement of a public hearing to receive public comment on an amendment to both the sign ordinance and subdivision of land ordinance. The hearing will be held as a part of the regularly scheduled business meeting of the Board of Commissioners on May 9, 2018, at 7:30 PM. That is my motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Standish. We move to the Chairman of the Cultural and Environmental Resources Committee, Commissioner Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm pleased to announce that during the month of March 2018, Springfield Township residents recycled 158.4 tons of materials with a household participation rate of 78%. The net cost for the month was $18,680.16. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson. Let's go to the Chairman of the Parks and Recreation Resources Committee, Commissioner Graham.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one item this evening, concerning the Memorial Day events. The Arthur V Savage American Legion Post of Windmore hosts the annual Windmore Memorial Day Parade throughout the streets of Windmore, and sponsors a Community Day event in Veteran Park following the parade. Therefore, I move that the Board of Commissioners grant permission to the Arthur V Savage American Legion Post of Windmore to utilize Veterans Parks for Community Day events, including the serving of beer at Veteran Park. Permission is granted, conditioned upon the American Legion Post completing the following: one, securing a permit for the use of the park; two, hiring a police detail to be at the park when the beer is being served; and three, secure an insurance rider for the day's events, naming Springfield Township as an additional insurer. That is my motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Graham. Calling the Co-Chairman of the Public Safety Committee, Commissioner Maxwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a few items this evening. First is in regards to the emergency management plan. It is essential that municipalities plan for all types of emergencies and disasters. Residents rely on municipalities to be first responders, provide life-saving and life-sustaining resources, and personal in the event of a disaster. Municipalities are required to maintain an emergency management plan as a resource storing and after an emergency situation. Annually, Montgomery County meets with the municipalities of the county to be assured emergency management plans are up to date. In the event there is a change in the Board of Elected Officials of a municipality, the municipality must acknowledge the plan is up to date through promulgation. Therefore, I move that the Board of Commissioners of Springfield Township adopt the current emergency management plan effective April 11, 2018. That is my motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
Next item is Resolution Number 1148. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt Resolution Number 1448, a resolution establishing April 28, 2018, as Arbor Day in Springfield Township. In conjunction with Arbor Day, the Springfield Township Shade Tree Commission will conduct a tree planting ceremony at Cisco Park in Erdenheim, beginning at 9:00 AM. The tree will be honoring former Flower Town Fire Company member William House. Mr. House served as an active member of the Flower Town Fire Company for 70 years, and was fire chief for over 25 years, retiring in 2013. In addition, the township will be offering 30 small container trees to residents who pre-register to receive them. Residents can call the township offices at 215-836-7600 to pre-register. That is my motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
In addition to the traditional Arbor Day program, the Shade Tree Commission is also partnering with the Free Library of Springfield Township to conduct a storytime program on Monday, April 16, at 7:00 PM. The program will include a short story from the book, "The Tree Lady." Children will be provided with tree seedlings and small pots for eventual transplant into their private yards. That concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Maxwell. We turn to the Chairman of the Library Committee, Commissioner Cobb.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no formal report, though I do want to at least acknowledge yesterday was National Library Workers' Day, celebrating the key role that librarians play in our communities, and a nice reminder to thank our local librarians and let them know how much they're appreciated for what they do for the community. Thank you, Mr. President.
Right, good for you for keeping up on that. That concludes our committee reports and our agenda. At this point, we are open for any final public comment. Mr. Rennie?
Mr. Garrity will tell you that as lawyers, we are word merchants, we get paid by the word, so I'm here to finish off my earlier conversation. Might I ask, Mr. Chair, the contribution amount that will be made to the community ambulance of Ambler as a result of their being retained as the ambulance service for the community?
It's a five-year commitment, and it's subject to offset based on community fund drives. It's also, there's an equipment component of that which will terminate at the end of the five years, but the average over that five years will be in the high five figures.
The high five figures per year, or like in a contract?
Yes, yes, per year.
So the contribution that's being made is going to be in excess of $100,000?
It'll be, well, not on a per-year basis, but yeah.
Generally, okay. The next question, you had made, you had alluded to or made reference to the inability or the fact that you haven't received financial information. I'm curious to know what it is that you haven't received, because obviously, the accountant for the township produced a report for the years 2012 through 2016, and information has been readily being provided to the township accountant. Has he provided you that information?
Yeah, that number all came from the 990 filings, which we provided to him, so we're aware of those.
So there was a report that was issued, but...
Right, those, I believe all the numbers on that report are from the 990s.
Well, this breaks down various things by expenses, and that wouldn't necessarily be reflected there, but in any event, I just wanted to know where it came from. Then the last thing, we received a love letter from Jim about the lease, and as you may know, the lease provides for a dollar a year in terms of rent. One of the elements of default that was asserted was that... One of the elements of default that was asserted was that you hadn't been getting the dollars per year. And then there was another claim in there about a leasehold mortgage, and I would just lend to you to take a look at your email strings from 2005, because Jim surprised me when he told me, when I met with him, that you didn't know there was a leasehold mortgage on that property. Well, I would suggest that you take a look at your emails, internal emails, because there's plenty of email threads that surround the addendum in 2005 that was extending that lease by an additional period of time in order for us to get that mortgage. So from that perspective, like I said earlier, we're willing to work with you in order to transition things. This, of course, doesn't surprise us, because we figured you'd already made up your minds before we got here. So what I'm saying to you now is that in order to avoid a contest, we still ought to work together to get to yes and to the finish line, because I don't think it makes sense for all of you folks to spend taxpayer dollars litigating the issues, but for doing so, we're going to have to talk a little bit about that. So we're open to that. That's my point.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Let me give that to him. Do we have any other public comment at this point? Going once, going twice? I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.